This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council Finance Committee Meeting, October 30th, 2024. Do we have any, we don't have any minutes?
No, I got two sets you'll have by the end of the week, actually.
Okay, great. All right, in that case, let's start with, let's see, no mayor, no public. Okay, let's start with this appropriation. So we have an appropriation for $346,583 from capital stabilization to be transferred to a new plow truck. Greg, do you want to sort of walk us through this?
Sure. So to cover the city in a major snow event, we have eight frontline snow vehicles that we would have out, whether it be snow or ice. And two of those vehicles over the last two years had to be taken out of service because they were rotted and rusted beyond repair. One of them, the one you have in front of you tonight, was Truck 62, it was a 2000 International plow standard truck that was pretty much assigned to Hoyok Street and Mountain Road Route 141 for most of its life. And just the constant salt environment just really rotted the truck to the point where we couldn't, it was no longer fixable or safe to be on the road. The frame was rotted so bad, it started to separate in the back and the truck was a safety hazard. So we had to park it last year and then subsequently surplus it. So I need to get that truck replaced. And that's what we're trying to do with this appropriation is just get another truck here to fill the position that truck occupied.
Okay. Councillors, questions?
I still have a question of what's the balance in the capital stabilization?
It's 3.3 million, 320,441.95.
I still have a quick question. Greg, is this, what does this truck used for when it's not winter and it's not plowing? Is it offline during the regular season or is it used in other seasons for other things?
No, we wouldn't use it for any municipal use. We buy them with an all-season body. So a truck like this wouldn't necessarily be out digging on a water main, you know, used on a water main break because we'd use something else that wasn't in such nice shape. But we'd use it for a variety of different things.
Thanks. Well, it seems to me like we need to have, you know, a fleet of plow trucks available. You know, you don't want to get caught short on that. And we have the money. So I don't have any objection to this appropriation. Anything else from anybody else?
I actually have a question for our auditor. Are there any concerns regarding any upcoming expenses or anything like that that would make this a concern for purchase?
Not for this one. This is out of capital stabilization. It's not a general stabilization. Capital is the purpose to buy something which has more than five years' life. So I don't have any concerns on that. Thank you very much.
I just, neither here nor there, but I think it's impressive that you got the last, have the last one running for 24 years. So.
Yeah, we, like, the guys at the highway department, they work very hard to keep them going and take care of them to really get the longevity out of them. That just eventually, the rot and rust just gets to a point where you can't do it safely anymore. So you have to, they have to get retired. But, you know, to have gotten the better part of 23 years out of that last truck, the payback's pretty good there. So.
Yeah. Hopefully we can get another 23 more. Unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation of $346,583 for a FY25 Western Star Plow Truck to the full council. Motion second, all in favor? Okay, great. Thanks, Greg.
Yep, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
All right. Would you like to come up and talk with?
Anywhere?
Yeah, wherever you want.
So I'm here for the assessor's office in place of Martha. So we are asking for the November 6th City Council meeting to have the request to have the fiscal '25 tax classification public hearing. And that would be for the November 20th meeting to have our hearing done.
I see. Yeah, that seems reasonable to me. I mean, I've I've done these, what, seven times now or so? And it's usually, the recommendations are usually pretty, perhaps the same.
We just talked to the person from the state today and everything's in place. And it's a reval year, so there's a lot more involved in it. But everything's going well, so he sees no problem for November 20th.
Okay, great. So then we would expect to hear from the assessor's department or maybe the board at our next finance meeting in two weeks.
Martha said she'll go to the November 13th meeting and she'll go over the public hearing and then the requests by the assessors, you know, like open space and single tax and stuff like that. She'll go over all of that at that meeting.
Okay, perfect. Well, we look forward to that. And I will make a note here, actually, to schedule a public hearing for reclassification. Okay, so I have a note and I will set that public hearing next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that was all pretty quick. I I would like to just take a little time. Is this me? Do we have like a hard stop in this room? I don't know why anyone would know that.
I want your calendar here.
Uh, yeah. Uh, let's see. No, I don't think so.
Something else?
Oh, I was just wondering because I was, the last time we started talking about.
There's a meeting downstairs and then there's a meeting that I'm ready to go.
National Sonic, what time was that?
Yeah, but that's right now.
Downstairs.
They must have figured that out.
Because they know someone who went there.
That's why people have been looking here and there.
Yeah. And the other thing, okay, so yeah, we're good until we get sick of talking about it. I wanted to see if anyone's had any further thoughts about how we want to move forward in terms of the the required review of salaries for elected officials and appointed committees. We talked about this a little bit, Councilor Shrell, while you were recovering. But I don't know if we've reached any, if there's any new thoughts or ideas about sort of where we should go with any of this.
I think I'm open to the city clerk's suggestion of the 2% increase for the mayor over the next kind of two cycles. That's, I think, reasonable. I think that, I don't think it prudent on the part of city council to review that hypothetically in the next two years because a new mayor will be seated at that time. And I don't think that that's ethically appropriate. I think we should do it before that election happens and then move forward with that. That's my personal opinion with that. I'm not open to $120,000. I think that's, I think that's excessive. I'm not open to considering raises for city council members. We just gave ourselves a 50% increase. I think that what we do for the amount of time that we work is, I think, $6,000 is a fair stipend compensation salary, however you want to call that. I think if people go and be up and beyond, above and beyond that, that's their personal choice. And that has nothing to do with what is expected of the community for us. In terms of the stipends for committees, I'm going to be very honest. I have nothing but respect for the people who sit on the Board of Assessors and the Board of Public Works. But I actually think we have to consider removing that. If we can't provide compensation for all the committees equally, then I don't think we should be doing that anymore. I've spoken to the Board of Assessors and I have something from great gentleman, but also just my understanding historically, those two boards used to be elected and they are no longer elected. And quite honestly, I think the compensation that they are getting are holdovers from when this was a town government and no longer a city government. And I say that with all due respect to them. I am grateful for the commitment that they have to the city, but the responsibilities that they had at that particular time is different than what they do now. And I, and I'll just say this and people can say whatever they want to say. Those positions, I think, have historically been held by men. And I think that those, that compensation may be the result of positions that were just traditionally held by men and felt the need to be compensated, et cetera, et cetera. But we're a city now. There's different lines of responsibility and different lines of of evaluation and supervision, et cetera. And I think they just don't fall, they don't, they don't fit the same in the city anymore. So that's my personal opinion. I certainly don't, if people don't want to not do away with the stipend, that's people's personal choice. But I certainly don't think that we should be giving them a raise because some of those meetings, they work very hard, but they're not, in some instances, meeting as frequently as they used to. And they don't have the same kind of level of responsibility or engagement that they had once had. And I think some of that had to do with the fact that they were the supervisors of positions in the city. So that's where I'm sitting right now. That's how I feel right now.
My thoughts, a lot of my points, I agree with Councilor Denham. Certainly, I do not think it's appropriate for us to raise city council stipend at this point, seeing as though we just did that last, last time. I do agree with a mayoral increase, but incrementally not one fell swoop of $25,000 or $30,000 at a clip. I don't think that would be prudent. And optically, I don't think that would look good. So I do agree with incremental increases over time. And I'm certainly open to talking more about the appointed committees. Because what Councilor Denham said is correct, that when these were established, they were elected positions and stipends were based on a different set of circumstances than are now. So I certainly think that needs, that process needs to be reviewed a little more closely and possibly changed.
Yeah, one last thought. I agree with everything Councilor Shrell just said. I want to emphasize this again, we're in a deficit and I think that that's that's just a poor life that we do that. And again, in terms of the stipends for committees, if we could do that for everybody, I would be absolutely open to that. But that's not where we are financially. I think it's fiscally irresponsible. I think that we should reevaluate that as whether or not there's a stipend or not. And then if we are in a better financial situation a few years from now, then maybe we can evaluate giving segments. But right now, based on my understanding from the gentleman who spoke, and I apologize to him if he's listening or listens at some point. Because he has to pay into some sort of state retirement for that particular thing, he's actually losing some compensation for that. And it adds more paperwork to the fact that we're doing this, right? So it's just,
Yeah.
it just doesn't seem, it just seems like a lot of work for a very small compensation.
Okay. Well, thanks for your thoughts. So sort of where I am on these things, pretty close, but slightly different in certain places. I think that the number one thing that I'm most interested in doing and that I think is the most important to do is the mayoral salary. And the big reason for that is that it's, it's a four-year term. Right? So like, it's, we, we want to set it now, I think. We want to figure out what that's going to be. I don't, I don't want to, you know, whoever the new mayor is, I'd rather not have them come in. We do have the lowest paid mayor in Massachusetts among strong mayors. We are also one of the smallest cities in Massachusetts, so that's not entirely out of line. But if you just draw a trend line of kind of population to employment, we are even an outlier in that respect. But I, I would be comfortable with something in line with what with what Barb had recommended to us, where it's a gradual.
Incremental.
And that's what we did last time, and I thought that made sense. Because, you know, one of my problems with this process and the way that we do, we do this is that it ends up in situations where the salary has not been raised suddenly in a decade or two decades. And suddenly it's, it's a huge problem and then you have to make a big shift. And then that big shift is really bad optics. So my, my general preference is to try and keep things reasonable by having periodic incremental updates. And so I would be fine with basically doing what, I'm having trouble accessing my email on my phone, but Barb gave some specific numbers. We could come back next time with, you know, real specifics, but I think something to that extent of, it was something like a 2% or 3% annual increase rounded up to the nearest, whatever.
Let's, I think, I would like to try to find it because I feel like we're running out of time and I'm getting a little bit more nervous about the deadline coming up.
Been kicking this can down the road for a little bit.
So let me see if I can find what she, if I can remember the title of it. It was Mayor Compensation. Let me just start there.
While you're looking for it, I would say, I don't think that the city council or the school committee needs a raise. I do think that there might be something prudent to build something similar to what we have for the mayor, what we have for many of our employees, sort of just a general cost of living adjustment into the, I think that something that might, my hope is that if we got in the habit of doing that, it might prevent us from being in a situation like the one we were in last term where the council, a decade down the line, is suddenly like, wow, these salaries, these stipends are quite low, but then raising them is like a big shock. And that, you know, that was something that the mayor had said too, that if we're going to do that, it'd be better to do it gradually than in big chunks. So that is something that I think there's some value in considering, but I'm not, I don't, it's not enough of an issue to me that I'm really going to fight it if the two of you see differently on that. And in terms of the stipends, I'm fine for the appointed officials. No, okay, cool. I will give me one second to finish my thought and I'll read this. In terms of the status for appointed officials, I'm fine not moving on them. I don't feel like I necessarily, I feel like I'd need a little bit more information before I'm ready to talk about eliminating them, just because I don't, I think I just need to really understand, like, you know, if I could get a sense that actually, like, they are basically like, they're so small and because of that, sort of the penalty on the pension stuff, it basically is, basically it doesn't make sense to have them. Then I would be open to cutting them, but I don't, I just, I don't feel like I understand, like, I think that you're right, that probably the reason why those are paid positions is because a holdover from town government, but I just, I'm not, I need to understand a little bit about how their workload has changed and how it, you know, stands and sort of get a sense from the membership of how they feel about that before I end up axing a stipend. It's, I'm not against doing it. I just feel like I need to understand that situation a little bit better than I do. But I do feel like we could make a good deal of progress by, at the very least, so.
But just in response to the, you can look at that one. Just in response to the stipend for appointed positions, you don't have to make a decision this year. That's a conversation that we can continue into next year. It just, they just, there would be no raise, right? So that's, that's, I think there's lots of time to be able to do that. I wouldn't feel comfortable at this time anyway, raising it. I'm open to having conversations about what to do about it in the future, but because I don't feel comfortable raising it and I don't know where you all stand, I don't think that there's a deadline or I'm not feeling pressured that we have to make a decision immediately. In terms of a cost of loving, or a cost of living, again, I don't feel, I guess I'm not open to that. I don't, I don't see us as city employees. And I, I think that I feel like cost of living adjustments come with being employees of a particular organization or institution or something like that. I think for myself, I do this because I want to give back to my community, not because I'm expecting something from. And the involvement that I have and the choices that I make, I think, are my choices and they are not the responsibility of the residents and the taxpayers of the city to compensate me for my choices. I think that the $6,000 that we are offered is incredibly generous. And I, I feel that I'm not, I'm not owed anything more, right? I do this because I want to give back, not because I'm looking for an additional supplement to the salary that I already make in my, in my work. So I just, I feel like if something happens in the future, then my choice not to be here is my choice or my choice to continue in this is my choice, but it's not something, I don't have an expectation of annual or bi-annual increases because I'm in this position. And furthermore, we all engage very differently and some people do exactly what they are, are, want to do. They serve on two committees and they come to city council meeting and they prepare for those things. Other people go above and beyond and blah, 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 blah. That's their choice. But now we're saying these people who don't do anything are suddenly getting the same amount of people who go above and beyond. And again, it's all choice, but the city is not responsible for those varying choices. And, and I don't think it's fair for us to expect that of them to, to do that. And again, I'm just going to say, we're not employees and I don't think it's fair for us to have that expectation.
Okay, I disagree with some of that, but I,
That's, that's fine.
I, I just, I think more broadly philosophically, I do think that every city council in every city in Massachusetts, to the best of my knowledge, is, is paid. And we are among the lower paid. So I do think that there's, broadly, there's a sense that we are, we're special employees, but we are, we are paid by the city. What we do is work, you know, and like, and yes, it's not, I'm not expecting a, I, I'm, I mean, frankly, what I have is, it's not about necessarily the money for me, but it is, I don't think that this is necessarily like other elected officials, you know, who do work in elected politics are compensated for their, their work. I don't think that it's fair to assume that everyone who does this sees it as sort of a, is in a position where necessarily they, they can just say, hey, this, this large chunk of my waking life is a gift that I give to the city. Like, I think that there is, I mean, they can do that and that's very generous and, you know, it's commendable that you view it that way, but I just do think that if we expect everyone to see it that way, and I do think that there's some broad problems.
Yeah, I think we are a small city of 16,000 people and we probably are on the lower end because we're the smallest city. And so I don't think it's fair for us to think that that we have to be compensated the same amount of money of larger cities. I just don't think that that's realistic. Regardless of whether or not the outcome that we do has the same impact on various cities. And I disagree. I, I don't think we're employees. We are in fact elected officials and I think that those are defined very differently.
I think that legally we are special employees. I think that that's like, that is the definition. I mean, we get, we have a relationship with HR, like we have, there's, like, I think that in some ways, we are considered special employees of the city, I think legally.
Well, I would want clarification from that, from our, from somebody, either with HR or not, but I don't think it really matters because it's neither here nor there, but we're elected.
Regardless, elected or not, the way I look at it is, and I view the mayoral position differently because the mayoral, that's full-time. We are not full-time city councillors. We do it on the side along with our given occupations. And, and I'm of the mindset, I mean, I would entertain talking about a cost of living increase for the ma, for the mayor's salary because like I said, that is how whoever's the mayor is making a living. We are not making a living being city councillors and I agree with Councilor Denham. I don't feel as though we should qualify for, for a standard of living increase or a cost of living, cost of a living increase. I just, that's just my opinion, I think.
Let me just ask this then. Do you think we should really, like, get rid of our salary, our stipend altogether in the school committees?
No, but I don't think it should automatically go up either. I think it should be a discussion every time it's, it's raised. Because as Councilor Denham said, you know, you have people who do this much, you have people who do this much, you have people who do this much. And it's hard to quantify that. But if you raise the pay for one, you raise the pay for the mom. And like I said, I go back to, this is not our main source of income for all of us to live off of. So I don't feel as though we should qualify for a cost of living increase for this position specifically.
Okay, well, I hear you. I won't push the issue further. I just want to say, like, the reason why I think it makes sense to, why I think it would be a prudent policy to tie these things to some extent to the fact that inflation happens, that when we have these discussions, it's usually because it's crossed a point where it no longer, where the salary no longer feels appropriate. And usually it crossed that point several terms ago. That's how it was last time, you know, it was, we, like, there was a feeling that, okay, this stipend hasn't been raised in some time, but we don't want to do it right now. It doesn't seem like a good time. It doesn't seem like a good time. And it gets to a point where you say, okay, we need to finally have this conversation. Well, now you're actually talking about a relatively large percent increase. You know, and I feel like, just for the purpose You know, and I feel like just for the purpose of fiscal planning, it is more prudent to do those things gradually over time rather than periodically at big fits. That being said, um there's three of us and it's uh I'm fine moving on. Um, sorry, because I've done a much unlocking this again.
If you scroll to see what's above it, it's what we're currently doing, but this is what we would be proposing now.
Okay, yes. So what, um Barb had proposed some thoughts about this and her proposal would be the idea that the uh the mayor's salary uh would be $90,000 effective January uh 2025, since that's the amount the current amount of the ordinance in our vote will occur before that time. But then it would be 93,000 in January 2026. 96,000 in January 2027, 99,000 in January 2028 and 102,000 in January 2029. So that'd be basically what we're seeing here is a a three, what she's proposing is sort of a $3,000 a year increase to the mayoral salary.
For how many years?
Well, that would go for the next four year term. Um, so by uh 12,000 dollars over that period. I I'm okay with, I I I wouldn't mind. So that's just straight $3,000 a year. Um, I don't know. What are your thoughts on this?
I kind of like that. I think it's it's incremental. It's not too much at one fell swoop, which I like, like I said earlier, I think would be optically wouldn't wouldn't look good. Um, I li- I like that proposal. I don't have an issue with that. Uh, I don't think we have to get too overly complicated. I mean, yes, it's 3,000 every year. I don't think we have to get complicated and say, well, it's this many percent. I mean, I think 3,000 is a pretty round number. I'm not, what do you think, councillor?
I think it's fair. Uh, I would imagine that in four years, this is going to be reviewed again. Um, so the other thing is, is I'm I don't think the mayor's position should be a lifetime kind of guarantee of what somebody wants. And so I think it's an elected position and I think that they're, they should be compensated because I think it's stressful. I don't think they should be the lowest paid uh employee in the city, right? But I also think that I don't want personally, I don't want the mayor to have a a salary that I I I and you may disagree and that's totally fine, but I don't think that the salary should be the reason for which someone wants to be in this position. So I think it's a fair salary for them, for someone to to want to do this, to feel like they're being compensated, to feel like the city is respecting them financially and then for them after a certain period of time, move on. Um, and and so that's that's my philosophy around the mayoral salary, but I think uh it, I think it's a it's a recognition of of the work that they do. And I think it's uh they shouldn't be the lowest paid person in the city. Um, and so I think that's a, that's a fair fair salary and to acknowledge that over time they should become a standard stage as it goes up.
Yeah. I do worry just. We're a city of 16,000 people and what, 12,000 registered voters? So you got 12,000 people and you're looking for somebody who's going to be CEO of a $50 million organization. Um, not everyone has that skill set. And out of the people who do, most of them make a lot more than us. And so there is, I just have a I don't know who's gonna run. And, you know, I think that if you look historically, we've gotten pretty lucky, but maybe we'll keep getting lucky. It just feels like, um you know, you you're asking people to, um you're asking people to to make a a big, you you're asking a lot of people who'd be doing this to be making a a pretty big financial sacrifice relative to the other jobs that they could have with that kind of skill set. Or you're having people who are going to have to lean really, really heavily on their uh department heads and their 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 staff to get a lot of things done because they're not coming in with the skill set or experience um that an organization the size would generally take. And that, that's just been a concern that I've consistently had and and I I I agree that the gradual, like, we're not gonna change everything overnight. It's just.
Yeah, no, and I understand your logic when you compare it and when you're looking at it in in a business model. Um, but people go into business to get rich. People don't go in politics to get rich. I don't want a may, I I don't want somebody may to be mayor of East Hampton who says, oh, look, look at the salary. Think I'll apply to be mayor. But that's the wrong reason. That, you know, I I understand that we don't want to be the lowest, but we also don't want that to be the top reason somebody wants to wants to serve the city either.
No, and I don't want that, but what I'm saying is sorry, I'll I'll get right. I just saw your hand. I'm sorry. I'll get right to you. I I it's not so much that I want this to be a position that people are going to go get rich, but I'm, what I'm saying is if you're somebody who has the skill set that to to do this job and 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 you're coming up and 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 you could do this, but it mean, it's going to mean your family, from what you're making right now to this job, you're taking a 50, 70, 100,000 dollar pay cut. Like, that's probably gonna mean you're not gonna do it. And so it does mean that there's a, it it does, does present um a little bit of a uh of a, it it just freaks me out a little bit, like, it's not something we're going to solve tonight. Uh, and it's not something that, and and it's it's something that was, it's a, it's going to be difficult to ever really solve it just because we are a smaller city. Um, but I don't know. I I I wouldn't mind if, like, I I like what Barb is suggesting. I I wouldn't mind if the increases were just a little bit higher. Just so that we're doing a little bit to chip away at that because it it does, uh, you know, it it does free me, but that's all.
Yeah. Notice, I I don't think we're chipping away at anything, right? I think we're a small city and this is what we've said. We're compensating people. I think there's a lot of people who make a great deal of money who, quite frankly, are incompetent. Um, and they get held in those positions because of their board. I think that uh mayors often rely on their department heads. They, this is the work that they do and they should be able to rely on them. That's why they're in, that's why they're department heads. That's what they should be expecting if they're also working in city government. Um, also, I think that um there's a lot of CEOs who aren't on the ground writing grants and things like that, right? They're providing direction, they're providing uh in some instances, they're providing inspiration, right? I think leaders come in varying forms. Um, but I don't think that because we have an assumption of what other communities pay for their mayors, that that means that we should have, we should also do that. Um, we have competent voters who I think are able to say, actually, what this person is saying right here, I don't necessarily agree with, and that's not the type of leadership that I want in this particular, in our community. Uh, and they're likely to to choose or select the person who uh they think has the the better skill set. Um, and I don't think that that as city councillors, we should I'm not saying that you're making that assumption, but we shouldn't assume that that people aren't able to figure that out. I think that there's a lot of really great competent leaders who don't have CEO salaries, who are more than willing to take on this particular work uh and show that dedication and that commitment to the community that that they love. Um, and so, I, you know, I don't, I don't want to make assumptions, but people who are happy uh are the best leaders.
And I'm not making that. I'm just saying.
I hear, I hear what you're saying.
You've got a small sample size here. It's such a, the number of people who are eligible to even apply to this job in the first place is so small. And you take for the subset of that as people who would even think about doing that in the first place. I do think that the low salary is, I I do worry about the day that we have an election. And we just don't have a candidate who can do the job. I do worry about that, but um it sounds like you guys are good with this. So if somebody would like to make a recommend, to make a motion, um then go for it if we wanted, uh, if we want to take a pause on this and come back next time with a motion, I'm fine with that as well.
I'll make a mo-, do you want to make the motion? You can read it right off my phone.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, yeah. Except Barbara's proposition.
So I think what you would just have to do is just read, make the motion effective and then just kind of tweak the words a little bit, but just over the next three year, three, was it three years or four years?
It was four years, starting with 26 through 29. So I'd like to make the motion regards to increasing the mayor's salary beginning January, well, the first raising would be January 1st, 2026. Correct? Of $3,000 and subsequent of the current amount of ordinance in your 93,000 effective January 1st, 2026, 96,000 effective January 1st, 2027, 99,000 effective January 1st, 2028, and 102,000 effective January 1st, 2029. In essence, an increase of $3,000 annually between January 1st, 2026 and January 1st, 2029.
Second.
Um, can I suggest that you amend that motion to say and that we make no other increases? Uh, or do you guys want to punt that until, do you want to keep talking about those other things? It sounds like the general view is that we're not making any other increases to the other, to the other salaries and stipends.
Oh, could we just do the mayor first?
Yeah, sure, sure, sure. Okay. All right, motion a second. Uh, all in favor? I'm abstaining on this one. I just, I I do worry about it. I I mean, I think it's better than nothing. I don't, but I I do worry about it. That's fine. Um, and then.
Want me to make a motion for the other one?
Yeah, sure.
So I make a motion to uh not provide any or not increase uh compensation for uh e- elected officials or appointed uh committee positions um in this term.
Other than the mayor.
Other than the mayor.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a, any fiscal reporting to talk about or are we?
Not yet.
Okay.
I finalized the revenue report, but now I'm working on the expense side. Once I have both together, I would be able to provide a report as of June 30th, 2024.
Okay, great. Super. While in that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.